Jan, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to the February 17th, 2022, meeting of the City of Plan and Zoning Commission. I will read the commission rules and procedures. The Plan and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the city council. The city council will hold a public hearing and make the final decision on all matters before the commission, other than site plan and subdivision plots, unless denials or conditional approvals thereof are appealed. Please contact the city clerk or Development Services Department staff for details on council hearings. Applicant will be given 10 minutes to present their request. Proponents and then opponents from the public are then allowed to speak in that order, with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. Applicant is then allowed five minutes for rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed, and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration, and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report, unless an individual present or member of the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. We have a quorum, and Jan is on the phone. I would like to welcome Lea Rudopi, who is a new member in the front there. Welcome, Lea. I need a motion to approve the minutes from February 3rd.
This is Carolyn, I'll move.
Thank you, Carolyn. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Abstention?
I abstain.
Thank you.
Jan?
We hear you, thank you, Jan.
Thank you.
Okay, I will start with the consent public hearing items. The first one is a request from Wendy Steffs and David Steff for the following property located in the vicinity of 514 Foster Drive. Determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with Plan DSM. Amend the Plan DSM, creating our Tomorrow Plan to revise the future land use from parks and open space to low-density residential. Rezone property from P2 Public Civic and Institutional District to N1A Neighborhood District to allow this to be combined with adjacent parcel for the construction of a cabana. Is there anyone on the commission who would like to hear this item tonight? Anyone in the public? This will remain on consent? Item two is a request from Kelsey Brown for review and approval of a public hearing site plan for property at 325 45th Street and a Type 2 Design Alternative in accordance with Section 135 to allow for construction of a 1920 square foot addition that would be located within 14.75 feet of the rear property line, where 30 feet is the minimum required rear yard setback. Is there anyone on the commission who would like to hear this item? Anyone in the public? This will go on to the public hearing item. This will be a public hearing item.
I just want to clarify, are you the applicant? Okay, thank you.
So we only have one item for consent, item number one. I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
This is Dory, I'll move consent.
Thank you, Dory. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Jan?
Yes.
Thank you. Before we hear item two, item number three is being requested to be continued indefinitely. If you have any questions, Jason can answer them. That's what they're requesting right now. I'll read it quick. Request from Jessica Seova and Jesus Seoeva for the following property at 341 East Titus Ave. Determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with Plan DSM. Amend the Plan DSM, plan to revise future land use designation from parks and open to low-density residential. Rezone property from N3A Neighborhood District and F Flood District to N3A Neighborhood District to allow expansion of the existing one household residential dwelling to include a deck and swimming pool.
And if I could just clarify, the applicant is bringing in an engineer to try to assist in the effort, they need more time. The timing is unknown, so we thought it'd be best to continue it indefinitely. And at that point, when it's ready to be put back on an agenda, we will renotice this, so we'll send out notices again to the neighbors. Thank you.
And I do need a motion to continue that indefinitely.
I'll move continuing. This is Jan.
Thanks, Jan. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And Jan?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go back to item number two for the first public hearing item.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Sreoci Chakrabarti Planning Staff. So the item before you for consideration is a public hearing site plan for a property at 325 45th Street. They are asking for a Type 2 Design Alternative for their rear setback instead of 30 feet, allowing 14.75 feet from the rear property line. Here's an aerial of the property, so it's just adjacent to the Greenwood Ashworth Park and is located on 45th Street. The area in general is residential and consists primarily of one household dwellings around it. Here's a few photos of the subject property. Looking south and then looking north just gives you an idea of the character of the neighborhood. So with that, I'll move on to what the applicant is proposing. So the applicant is proposing to construct a 1,920 square foot addition to the east side of the house. And you can see here in the sketch, the new addition is superimposed next to the existing house, so you can kind of see how it sits here. And what the applicant is proposing is an indoor pickleball court that's built to regulations. And here is a sketch that kind of shows that in relation to the property line, this is a little bit difficult to see, but this dash line right here is the 30 feet from the property line. And so you can kind of see the building footprint extending beyond that. And then there is a retaining wall behind it that comes pretty close to the property line here. Here's some pictures of the property, just gives you an idea. And here is a floor plan. I'll just stay here for a minute for you to look at it. Elevations, you can see the, on the top, the south and north elevations. West elevation right here and the east elevation all the way down. This is the pickleball court section right here. Again, it's a little bit difficult to see, but hopefully gives you an idea. And here are some renderings, you can kind of see what the finished facility would look like. And so with that, staff is in support of this Type 2 Design Alternative request for an indoor regulation-sized pickleball court. We think that this is a well-designed addition and is in character with the surrounding neighborhood, and so therefore, staff is recommending approval of the rear setback favor request. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them at this time. We did not get any public comments back for this particular request.
What's the square footage of the current house? I'm sorry, I'm not... Like, what percentage of the house is this increasing it by?
Probably defer that to the applicant.
I think if you go to slide six, sorry, I mean, you can just kind of look at the footprint, I mean, shown, and, I mean, it's, there's, obviously, the house is multi-story, so as far as living area versus a footprint, but that kind of gives you a sense of scale.
I assume this went through the stormwater department and also notes were made about tree mitigation. I'm not exactly clear by looking at this, how many trees are being taken out?
Yeah, our engineering staff in the Permit Development Center would review this through the building permit request. I mean, this isn't a platting exercise, or it's also a single family. I'm not 100% sure how the cities, the mitigation impacts this particular use and development. We can double-check that.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant here? Would you like to come up and speak? You have 10 minutes. Say your name and address.
I'm here on behalf of Kelsey Brown and Adam Rother. We're requesting this Type 2 Alternative. Reason being, there's going to be due to the cost to construct it forward, the chimney would be a higher increase cost due to canceling the situation. The plans are to match all aesthetics, front and back. The regards to the building, dormers will match the existing house. The placement of the pickleball court is based on the best location of the yard and access for the future garage down the road if desired.
Sir, did you have, did you have any drawings you wanted to present?
These are what you have.
Okay, and then, I didn't catch, are you Brad?
Yes.
Okay, so you're the contractor. Could you give us, just for the record, your address? It can be your business address.
Oh, 7934 University Boulevard.
793...
4 University Boulevard.
Okay, thank you.
What are you saying about a chimney?
There's a chimney at the front of the house, and I don't know if you can see it on the plans. If you zoom in, right where it attaches at the corner of the house there, there's a chimney that protrudes up, straight up, and we would like to push it forward, but due to the size they wanted the pickleball court, we had to obviously hit the rear yard setback.
Okay, so you're basically saying that the pickleball court would be farther forward if not for the chimney cost to move being too high?
Correct, correct. Yep, being too high to remove the chimney.
What is the square footage of the current house? Like, what percentage of addition is this? How big is this thing?
Well, this is 920 square feet. I'd have to look on the record of what the actual current house is.
Any other questions?
Where would the future garage go that you mentioned?
Oh, in the event they wanted to instead of use it for a pickleball court down the road, or somebody bought it, they could use it as a garage.
Oh, okay, I understand, thank you.
Is there a garage here already? I'm sorry.
There is. Actually, if you were to look to the existing adjacent structure there, if you were to take a right, right there underneath your purse, come down, just right there, is the current garage.
According to Assessor webpage, it appears that the living area is around 3,500 square feet. I don't know how accurate, you know, if that includes any unfinished area or not, but just to give you a sense.
All right, thank you. Do any members of the public want to speak in support of this item? Seeing none, any members want to speak in opposition of this item? Please come forward. State your name, address, and sign in.
My name is Phil Goldsmith. I live at 4415 Greenwood Drive. Our home bucks against our, rear of our property bucks against the rear of this property. And I wouldn't say that I am here in, opposed to the project, but I'm here trying to seek some answers. I've seen the plans. They were provided to me by the staff. And a couple of questions that I have, and was hoping to get answers to, would be, one is, it looks like the building itself and not the, you know, if you look at the building, there's a part that juts out, and that part, I'm wondering if that's the piece that's within 14.75 feet of our property line, or the kind of walkway and painting wall, if that's what they're referring to. It looks to me like it's more the building, which is kind of just a question I have. But also, my concerns are really kind of in the construction, during construction phase, and then also afterwards, with a few items. One would be drainage. We have a swale, everything that comes through our neighborhood ends up going down into Greenwood Pond. And our concern would be that the construction would possibly change this drainage route. And what we're hoping is it doesn't, that we'd like to see it drain similarly, draining continued to the west, and not coming back either to the south or pushing back to the east onto our property. My second concern would be with, during construction and also afterwards, would be with subsidence. We have quite a bit of slope in our back of our yard, and what I'm concerned would be that during construction process, if we lose the dirt there and we kind of lose that into either our yard, into their yard, or pushing back into kind of the gully that's behind our home. So either during construction or after construction, we have losing soil, and then also because of that, we lose the vegetation and have issues with erosion after that. Those are really kind of my concerns that I came seeking answers to tonight. Just hoping I could hear a little bit more on what the plans are and get some assurances that those have been addressed and those would not be issues. Thank you.
Have you, have you talked to the neighbors about this? Have they provided any answers about it?
No, I have not. I just, I didn't know anything about it until I received a letter from the commission.
When did you receive the letter?
Late last week.
Gotcha, okay, so you haven't been able to talk to your neighbors about it?
No, and part of that could be, you know, my problem, I'm a tax attorney, CPA, and this is kind of a busy time of year for me, so I'm not home.
Hard to imagine.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anyone in the audience which would speak neutrally? Seeing none, the applicant can now come up and speak for five minutes as rebuttal, maybe provide some answers.
Yes, we, to answer your question, we had planned on doing soil erosion.
Just so it's, could you be closer to the microphone? They'll be able to hear you if you're speaking at the microphone.
Okay, gotcha. We are going to do proper soil conditions, erosion control measures. We plan to have all the subsurface drainage drained underground and tiled. We have in the past on other projects taken prior erosion control measures and could come up with a erosion control program to prevent to the neighboring, if so desired.
Can I ask, so you're offering to provide an erosion control program that hits the neighbors? That would meet their concerns? Is that what you're saying as well, as a condition of this?
We can show you what we, we can show them what our plans will be for the erosion control measures.
Yeah, I think when you go through the permitting process...
Yeah, you have to do it anyway.
That's a part of that review, but, yeah, I mean, if you guys wanted to visit about it. The other question I have for you, Brad, the, there's also, there's a retaining wall that's being constructed, right?
Correct, yep.
So that, and I'm sure that's, how tall is that?
The one on the side or the one on the back?
Both.
Well, on the back, we're going to try and bring it up to five, basically the same height as the base of the pickleball court, about five feet, you know, give or take. And we haven't taken elevation sites yet. So if you have on the side, about four foot above sidewalk and driveway height.
See, you're probably working with an engineer that will certify that, so you, you know, you, right, because part of the permit process.
Process, yes.
Yeah, so you'll have, you know, there's a structural engineer that's looking at this design as well, as far as like holding the grade and those things.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have anything else for staff? All right, if not, I'm going to close the public hearing. And commissioners, what do you think?
I definitely have some concerns about the water runoff of such a large structure. I actually do water quality monitoring just down the hill from there at Greenwood Park. I do three different sites there, and one of them is directly across from this house. But I'm fairly confident that the city will be able to make sure that any of those issues are mitigated.
Is that a motion, Abby?
Motion to approve.
All right, there's a motion to approve staff by Abby. Anyone in favor, please raise your right hand. Jan?
Yes.
Anyone opposed? All right. Moving on to item number four. Request from Mark Lyle and Karen Lyle for the following property located at 1100 Army Post Road. Determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with Plan DSM. Amend the Plan DSM, plan to revise the future land use designation from community mixed use to industrial. Rezone property from RX1 mixed use to I1 industrial district to allow use of property for outdoor storage.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Sreoci Chakrabarti Planning Staff. The item before you is a rezoning request for a property on 1100 Army Post Road. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property because he wants to continue outdoor storage of equipment and trailers and so on within the property. The current zoning for his property is RX1, and the request is to rezone to I1 industrial district. Currently, the city ordinance only allows outdoor storage to be located within an I1 or an I2 industrial district. So the property is on Army Post Road at the intersection with Southwest 11th Street, and it is located on the Army Post Corridor, and here's a land use map that shows you the area along this corridor is community mixed use and predominantly consists of smaller scale commercial uses. And then, as you look further north and south, there is lower density residential. The property is located right here along the corridor, just to give you a context. Here's a picture that shows the existing storage at the property of the applicant. So it's a, it's a water repair use and includes a couple garages with a continuous driveway along Southwest 11th Street. And the storage area is at the back of the property, it's fenced in, and there's some auto parts, junk debris, and so on. Some zoning history, on November 10th, 2021, the applicant was sent a notice of violation, which states the following, that upon inspection, there was found to be inoperable, unsafe, and/or unlicensed vehicles, vehicular component parts, and other miscellaneous junk debris stored outside. The applicant subsequently applied for rezoning in order to mitigate this violation notice. Here's some pictures. This is from Army Post Road looking towards the subject property. It's right here. Have some more pictures to give an idea about the character of the corridor and the neighborhood in general. As I mentioned before, the subject property is designated as a community mixed use on the future land use map, and it is also located within a community node, which was indicated in the land use map that I showed you earlier. The proposed I1 district rezoning requires an industrial designation in the future land use map. So in order to find the proposed rezoning in conformance with our land use plan, that will require the land use map to be amended to industrial designation, which is currently designated as community mixed use in this area. Staff believes that the industrial development in the city should be focused in areas that are already designated for those types of uses. The subject property is located on Army Post Road in an area that is primarily small-scale commercial and retail uses that back up to the residential areas that I showed you in the map. So accommodating industrial uses could have a large impact on adjoining properties and the environment. Furthermore, the property is surrounded to the immediate south by predominantly low-density residential, and thereby, it's not really compatible to the character of the neighborhood. The other thing that I wanted to point out is that should the rezoning be denied, the applicant would have up to one year following the denial to seek a use variance from the zoning board of adjustment. Such a use variance would not... Such a use variance would not require an amendment to the Plan DSM land use map. So with those considerations in mind, staff finds the rezoning to be not in conformance with the existing Plan DSM future land use designation of community mixed use. And staff recommends denial of the requested amendment to the Plan DSM land use map to revise the future land use classification from community mixed use to industrial. Staff also recommends denial of the requested rezoning from RX1 mixed use district to I1 industrial district, since I1 district is not in conformance with the community mixed use designation in Plan DSM. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting. I'll just stay here for a minute so you can read through this. I believe there were three attendees who participated in the, in the meeting and did not have any concerns with the rezoning of this property. Additionally, we received a letter from the Water South Neighborhood Association. This property is not located inside a designated neighborhood association. However, this neighborhood association is within 250 feet of the property and they contacted the city to let us know that they did not have any concerns with the rezoning as well. And additionally, we received a comment card. Here's the consent map of the one property in support of the rezoning that sent us a positive comment card before. Finally, I just wanted to point out the city did also receive copies of petition that the applicant was able to receive signatures from at least 35 residents in that area that indicated that they did not have any concerns with the outdoor storage and parking within the property that was submitted to us. And it's just for your information, we received that. So with that, if you have any questions, I will be happy to take the call this time.
You mentioned one thing about inoperable vehicles and parts. Even if it was rezoned as an industrial, would those still not be allowed? Or would you then allow inoperable cars and parts to be there, stored there? Is that possible to have those stored? I mean, it seems like, that sounds like a nonconformance issue with just problem in general. Does this zoning change that problem?
Yes, so outdoor storage is allowed only in I1 or I2 industrial districts. So by having the I1 designation, the property owner would be able to legally have outdoor storage in his property as he is currently doing right now.
So the operability of the vehicle or the fact that there are parts as referenced in your description, that's irrelevant. So they could store containers or anything, whatever it wants, you know, any kind of stuff if it's working or not. You could run a junkyard there if it's an I1. Is that right?
Well, I couldn't, there's a fine line between a junkyard, which would be an I2 use and just outdoor storage with inoperables. I'm not 100% sure. I can look a little bit closer on the question of inoperables versus storage. I think when we have the applicant come forward too, we can have him explain his business model in greater detail. I don't, I don't know that we know 100% sure. I can look in the record, the database to see if the inspector took pictures of what's there. But what Sreya Shekhar was reading to you is just a quote from a notice from one of our inspectors. So I don't, we haven't as planning staff confirmed exactly, you know, word by word, is that accurate? I think what they were taking was like a section of code and pasting that in there. But I can look into it a little bit. There are outdoor storage performance measures. And I think those are actually in the zoning code versus chapter 135. So if this goes through, he would have to do a site plan and bring this site into conformance. Some of those things are like, you know, there's some setback requirements. There's fencing, obviously, can't stack higher than the fencing, those kinds of things. He may find a little bit of challenge as far as like, you know, the area he has is pretty small now to hit all of those. He could do it, but it may, what he ends up with might be relatively small.
But as to the material of the fence, it could be chain link still?
Let me double check that. I don't, I don't, it has to be, I don't need to double check that. It can't, it would need to be a solid material to buffer the residential use. So he, should the commission, should the city council actually ultimately rezone this, he's probably, you know, he's looking at putting in new fencing. He's going to be looking at landscaping and some other things along those lines.
And would those things still apply if he applied for and received a use variance?
I believe so. Whether that was, well, the difference between a use variance is that it could be, it would be somewhat negotiated with the use variance. So let's say the code requirement is a flat 10 foot setback. With the use variance, you could craft it, so maybe it's a five foot setback. Because the use variance, you're giving relief to let that happen.
Okay, thank you.
Where's the closest I1 zoning district?
I can see if I can pull this up on the.
I think the answer to your question is a long ways away.
Thank you.
And just so I'm understanding this correctly, if we denied this, they could get, they could still do it if they got a use variance from the other board?
If the board of adjustment grants the use variance, they could.
Okay.
And the, yeah, the board would be looking at hardship criteria and you'd have to demonstrate that he has a financial hardship, you know, by not getting the relief. Things that might account for that is, I assume he's owned the property, been there for a while, so he's vested in it. It's not like he's got a purchase option on it. Those kinds of things, but so I do want to, it's a decision of another board and there is certain criteria you have to hit.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. The applicant can now come up. And you have 10 minutes. Please state your name and address and sign in.
Mark Lyle, 1100 Army Post. So I do, I did try to mail this to everybody. I know some of them come back. If you want to have eight copies, does anybody want to see one? I would be more than happy to. Anybody else?
Sure.
I don't know how I'm here. I really don't. I've owned the property for five years. I'm not building anything, not doing anything. I want to be a good neighbor. So, you know, starting with this whole thing, you know, how did I end up here? I still question all of that. But we, you could see the trailer there. It's not blocking the sidewalk. I allowed the city to put the sidewalk in. They wanted to do it. I said yes. The approach to the run, to the area to the outside storage, the city put that in for me. That trailer was there when they were all done and done. I know I, because I moved the trailer when they were pouring the sidewalk. I didn't do anything. I haven't changed the rules. I have a six foot fence with barbed wire on top. Are we protecting the grass on the south side of the mowing? I mean, I just don't understand it. I have six businesses. We keep stuff. I try to keep it clean. I don't like to keep the trailers there any more than we have to. Logistics, sometimes it just works, you know, it's late night. We don't leave them there any more than I have to because it's not safe on the south side. I live on the south side. I grew up on the south side. I just know. I don't want to change anything that I've done in the last five years. I'm not building anything. I'm not doing anything. It's really seven car garage with two bathrooms. It's about the size of the width of the room. It's a small storage place. I have several other businesses. We use it a lot for parts and stuff, so it's close to two of the other locations. So sometimes we just drop something there, we'll pick it up the next day, take it out. It's a great storage unit for me. That's what I bought it for. The barbed wire fence was already there. The gate was already there. The city poured the approach to it. I didn't have any problem with the sidewalk at all. You know, we're doing what we had to with the city. I wasn't real happy with the turnout. I really didn't expect anybody to come. Two houses came or two individual properties, three people, two properties, and neither one of them had a problem. And one of them said, well, I already have three trailers on my property. I don't care about anything you're doing. They were thinking that it was all about the Knicks restaurant next door and like, don't have anything to do with that. The neighborhood association, they came down or I talked to them. They don't have a problem with it. I don't have a neighborhood association in mind. Like I said, I want to be a good neighbor. I've joined up and I'm a member of them. I did talk to Sue Ann Donovan at the meeting. She did say that she would get back to me. She apologized today because she didn't, just trying to figure out. So I decided that I'd go door to door. And I went knocking on every door that anybody would answer. Only two people didn't sign. One of them was too afraid to open the door and talk to me through the window. The other one didn't speak English enough that they knew what they were talking about. Nobody cares. Nobody, they're like, why are we even having this conversation? It was just like, they don't care. I mean, I wanted to talk to the business people, the people that work there, the people that live there, drive by, because a lot of those addresses that the city made me send a list to, some are in Colorado, some are in Arizona. I want to talk to the people that live and work on the south side. I didn't get all of them. There's still quite a few, excuse me, quite a few people that there. Sue Ann, I did talk to her today because I have a mixed, you know, mixed use. What's mixed use? I don't understand this. I was trying to get some clarification. She did apologize for not getting back to me. She did explain what mixed use was. I get it. I said, I really don't want to change anything that I've done. I don't plan on having anything changed. She suggested that, and she didn't know what the ruling was, but she said that it was possible that they could go this, but you couldn't have manufacturing there. I can't, I don't have any used cars there. Everything there is good and runs or I throw it away. I have several other businesses, like you said, and there are some parts that are just outside just because it's worth keeping, but it's not worth throwing away, so. Sue Ann, she said that what they could do, and she did no idea what the recommendation was. So she said they might say that you can do that, but you can't have manufacturing, like I think I said before. Sorry, I'm nervous. I just want to say thank you. You guys have any questions, I would greatly appreciate it.
Can I, what, how did you arrive at making the request for rezoning versus?
The city hit me up. They hit me up for outside storage, trailers in there, and the signage. And I've already fixed the signage issue that's on my agenda. So I had that taken care of already. And that's been approved and signed, so we're good on the signs. Now it's just a matter of getting through the trailer storage. And that, the property, the back of the garages is literally on the property line. So there's nothing behind it. It's all out in front and then there's a little bit to the south or what would technically be the back.
I meant, were you advised to go for an I1 rezoning versus, versus the use?
They said I had no other options and I'm just going by what they said.
Yeah, you cannot, you can't request a use variance unless you've been denied rezoning.
Gotcha, okay, so, okay.
Yeah. I just want what I have. I bought it for the reason, I mean, like you said, it's got six foot fence with barbed wire. Is that not being used for outside storage? I just assumed. And I won't make that mistake again. If I ever buy another property, I will make sure it's zoned correctly. But I'm not building anything. I'm not doing anything. I'm not trying to change anything. I'm just stuck. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since, since there's been confusion about this in terms of how you've understood how zoning works and how you fit into it and so forth, I think it'd be helpful if perhaps Jason would explain more clearly if you went for a variance, how that would affect your property and how you could work this out. So I would request Jason to explain a little bit more about that process in case we go that way.
Well, yeah, I mean, you can explain this. I think what I'd like to do though is take a step back, Judy, and then maybe hand it over to you.
Just hold it.
Yeah. And I don't know if people can understand me very well. I'll take this off. So just to kind of help explain what's happened is, you know, you purchased a property five years ago. I don't know what exactly what it was used for. I'm looking in the files. It looks like maybe somebody had used it for indoor storage or something. I don't know the history of it. But in short, what's happened is the, you know, your use is, whatever that use was there previously, which I don't, I don't know if it included outdoor storage. Our zoning enforcement staff must have said no. So you don't have legal nonconforming rights or grandfathering rights to that outdoor storage. So I don't, I can't tell how this got on the radar of our inspection staff, whether it was just notice or it was a complaint. But you were sent that violation notice. And then to rectify that is the rezoning process and that's why you're here tonight. And part of what this group does is make a recommendation to the city council. They ultimately will decide whether to rezone it. But the state code requires us to also look at our future land use map. And that was that colored map that Sreya Shekhar had. And we have to, we have to make sure that our zoning matches that if we're going to change our zoning. We can change this map too. But that's why I just wanted to make sure that this idea of this community mixed use, that's kind of a future land use map designation. That's not a zoning. The zoning is, you know, currently RX1, which is kind of a limited.
And I appreciate, and I talked to Sue Ann. I'm like, all I really want to do is be able to keep my trailer there and outside storage.
Sure.
That was it. I mean, I kind of got stuck in this because I would assume it was there. I mean, and that's bad on me, but I've had it for all time. I put the sidewalk in. I don't block the sidewalk.
But just to finish that train of thought before I hand it over to Judy to kind of talk about the use variance. But so that's why you're here is to ask to rezone it and as part of that process, look at amending this map. And, and that, those decisions run with the land. So you'll own it and you'll sell it and whatever zoning you have, that goes to the next person.
I was told by Sue Ann though, that you could put stipulations like no manufacturing, no this, no that.
Yeah, there are ability to have zoning, what's called zoning conditions that the owner has to agree to that could limit things if the council is in, you know, the commission can make a recommendation, but ultimately the council would decide.
So the council?
That is possible. But I want to finish the, kind of the, I want to get you to the discussion on the use variance, since that's where we'll ask. So the other avenue is what's called a use variance, you know, like you get relief of, you have a hardship, you get a, you get to, you don't have to rezone the property, but our board of adjustment finds that you have a hardship and they can offer you relief. There's a lot of, can be a lot of limitations. That can be limited to a timeframe or a particular use or owner. Judy, I don't know if you want to, just for the board, I mean, I recognize we might be going in a little deep.
Just for the record though, I spent a lot of money just to get here. And, and now I got to go there. I mean.
Right. Right, that'd be $300, the application fee.
And time off. I got burned a day vacation to be here.
But anyway, that's, those, that's the kind of zoning land use 101. Judy, I don't know for the purposes of the, sir, if you could let, Judy's our attorney. If you wanted to add anything for the commission's sake on use variance, though.
Right, I will try and keep it brief. Judy Parks Cruz, I'm the Assistant City Attorney for the City of Mooin. I also staffed zoning Board of Adjustment, so I'm pretty familiar with use variances. What you kind of need to do is step back a second and look at the 10,000-foot view. So when someone comes in and asks for rezoning, they are asking for permission going forward to do what is allowed according to how it designated that land. A use variance is different because it doesn't change the zoning, but it says for this specific location, there is, for this individual, such a hardship, and it's a standard established under state code and by case law that is a very high bar, that says basically you can't use the land for any other purpose unless we give you this allowance to use it in a way that is illegal right now. So a use variance is almost never granted. It is an extremely high bar for an applicant to meet. That's why we have in our code, if you want to do something that is illegal according to your present zoning, you have to come and request for a rezoning first. And then you would be able to, if it were turned down, go to the zoning Board of Adjustment and seek that other type of relief. And what Mr. Lyle and Jason have both said is correct. If there is a recommendation that we allow a rezoning, we can make it a conditional or a limited rezoning where there would be conditions put on that. These are ones that have to be reached by agreement with the property owner, so we aren't just dictating them. He would sign off on those. But that is part of what is something that is within your power. Does that help?
Thanks, Judy.
You're welcome.
Can I make sure I paraphrase for one quick? So we don't know exactly how we identified this, but right now what we're saying is, "What's happening, I was not allowed." To make this allowed, to make sure your business isn't impacted, to make sure that you're able to keep operating here, we have two options. One is to permanently change the rules for the property, and the second is to change it for you alone, but won't permanently change it, right? And right now, we're just sort of stuck in a loop where we have to say, "No, we don't want to permanently change it" because that doesn't make sense, because there's a state mandated, state mandated process that you have to get denied here in order to let us be able to allow you to use the property like you want and still be in line with state law. Is that right? So we're just needing to do this to make sure we can get to the option that works for him?
Well, it's partially right. The variance process is also part of city code. And so it is, you know, it's not something the state alone has imposed upon us. But with a variance, typically, those do run with the land as well. So future users of that land, unless we put a time limit, or if the zoning Board of Adjustment put a time limit on it, that would be something that successors and interest to ownership could also have the advantage of. So if it's something that we didn't want to see forever, or we wanted to make sure that it did not perpetuate forever, we could put a time limit. So, for example, if Mr. Lyle anticipates living there another 20 years, perhaps the zoning Board of Adjustment could say, "We'll grant this use variance. We're going to put a 20-year limit on it." Your rezoning of it, or recommendation to rezone the district, that would be a more general question of someone coming back in the future and saying, "Hey, I don't like the uses that are allowed here. I want to have them more consistent with what's going on around me." So one is more of a legislative decision, one is more a specific relief for an individual situation.
Right, and this, and this, this group and the city council are in charge of the legislative process. And then the other process is solely the responsibility of the zoning Board of Adjustment.
If I could just remind, the only card that came in was approval. The Neighborhood Association did, and the church that's two doors down also, or three doors down, also approved. Nobody cares. And I know you guys have a job to do and want to do it. I'm just trying to keep what I've had, and I don't know how I got here, but we just need to kind of get through it. I just don't want to kick this can down the road again and again and again. All I want is to be able to keep a trailer outside and the outside storage. It was nice to let the city put it in. They put the approach into the outside storage. I don't know, I mean, I guess part of that is, is like, if this is a problem, why didn't we do it? I mean, did nobody inspect the sidewalk when we're there and say, "Hey, what's the trailer doing here?" Or "What's the outside storage at that time?" I just, I'm trying, I'm baffled why we're here, still.
Yeah, thank you. I do have one question. Abby had asked about the fences. And if this did get rezoned, let's just hypothetically say, he would have to replace that fence, right?
Yeah, if this gets rezoned, the next step in the process is to do a site plan.
Right.
And to bring the site into conformity with the new use, is to change the use, change the zoning. And I do want to clarify since I'm talking, the staff that does public works and construction, they have their, they have no knowledge and no responsibility for zoning and use, so they
I know.
they wouldn't have known to talk to you about it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in support of this item? Anyone in opposition? Anyone neutral? I know you know the rules, but please state your name and address, or zip code.
Hi, my name is Carol Maher. I live in Ward 3, zip code 50312. I'll sign in. I just want to make sure the commissioners and the applicant understand, when I was looking at Chapter 135 on my laptop, the fence is required to be screened. It has to have a 25-foot setback from the street, 10-foot setback from all the lot lines, and it has to be paved. In looking at the pictures, it doesn't look like it's paved. It looks like it goes right to the sidewalk and the lot lines that you can see, and it's only screened on one side. So I just wanted to put that out there. That, it's not quite an easy blessing that it may sound like. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. All right, anyone else in the audience? The applicant does get time for rebuttal if you have any five minutes.
Yeah, I realized this morning when talking to Sue Ann that if we are approved, we have to go back to the city council to, your recommendation goes to the city council. And then if that's approved, then we still got to go back again for a variance one more time with set aside, green space. Because there is no, there's no real estate there at all. I mean, it's a seven-car garage with a driveway. There's, I don't know what the space is on that, but it's not very big, and we would have to go back again to variance. And I did talk to the inspector, Jimmy, about things to do to make things right. And that's why I was like, "Well, we'll get the sign fixed right away," and I did. But as far as the set aside, I made suggestions, trying to work with him, like, "Can we do this?" "Yeah, that'd be great, but you can't do that." And it's like, every time we turned around, it was there. And I did realize again that if we got through this, we're going to have to go through it again to get a variance of the property with what we got, so, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, if not, I'm going to close the public hearing. What does everyone think?
I guess I would, I would like to move staff because it seems like the staff has the best intentions of what we're doing here. It looks like if we approve this, the amount of cost of this being approved on the applicant is higher to get a worse outcome than if we do what is necessary with this procedurally, which is move staff, which denies this, which gives the opening for the negotiation, which allows for an outcome that can continue to provide the meaningful operation of the business in line with what the desire of the neighborhood is, as opposed to completely bending the rules for this little island that doesn't make as much sense when we can get to where we're, we can get to where it sounds like staff is going, which it looks like it's in the best intentions of the candidate, even though I know it sounds very confusing and convoluted. The denial today is the right move for the applicant, cost-effectively and flexibility-wise, is my thinking. So, sorry, the motion is I would like to move staff here, which is as written.
I agree, Chris. You just said it a lot better than I could. All right, there's a motion on the floor. All in favor, or Jan, sorry.
Oh, I was just going to say, I agree, too. I was going to make some of the same point, so, yeah, go ahead.
Perfect, thank you, Jan. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Anyone opposed? Oh, and Jan, sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number five. Request from Julie Stir for review and approval of a public hearing site plan for property at 3600 Kingman Boulevard for following type 2 design alternatives in accordance with city sections 135. Allow construction of a 572-square-foot detached garage with a low-slope shed roof, which does not match the roof type of the principal dwelling. Allow construction of a 21-foot-tall detached garage that is not one-half story less than the principal building.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for your opportunity, planning staff. The item before you is a public hearing site plan for a property at 3600 Kingman Boulevard. The applicant is proposing to construct a 21-foot-tall detached garage with a low-slope shed roof within the rear yard. The design character of the detached garage does not match the character of the principal dwelling or the surrounding neighborhood. The applicant is asking for a couple type 2 design alternatives. One in relation to the design of the roof of the garage, as well as the height of the garage, which is not one-half story less than the principal building. Here's an aerial of the property. It's on Kingman Boulevard at the intersection of 36th Street. The area around is primarily low-density residential. Here's some pictures of the subject property that gives you an idea of the design and the character of the neighborhood. This is looking west on Kingman Boulevard, and then this is looking east on Kingman Boulevard. I apologize, this is not, just to orient you, here's a sketch right here, if you can follow along my cursor, is Kingman Boulevard. The garage that is proposed to be constructed is right here. The existing garage is expected to go away, and it kind of gives you an idea of the distance from the property line and the layout in general of what is being proposed. There are some elevations. This is the south elevation. You can see here the low slope of the roof that is being proposed. This is the west elevation and the east elevation. That gives you some idea of how the roof looks in relation to the principal dwelling on this property. So staff has reviewed the two type 2 design alternative requests. And again, to remind you, the request is to, the first request is to allow construction of a two-story detached garage with a low-slope shed roof that does not match the character of the principal dwelling or the surrounding neighborhood. And the principal dwelling is a one-and-a-half-story house with a gable roof that is about 22 feet tall. The proposed detached garage would be 21 feet tall. And the applicant intends to use the second floor of the proposed garage for additional storage space. According to staff analysis, staff finds that the design of the proposed garage does not comply with the Chapter 135 of the city code. It does not match the character of the house and that of the surrounding neighborhood. Staff believes that a gable-style roof form is more appropriate than the proposed roof form and would still allow the applicant additional storage space. So with that in mind, staff is recommending, staff is recommending denial of the first requested type 2 design alternative to allow a detached garage with a low-slope shed roof that does not match. And staff is recommending approval of the second requested type 2 design alternative, which is to allow construction of a 21-foot-tall detached garage that is not one-half story less than the principal building, subject to a couple conditions. The first condition is that the peak of the garage shall not exceed the height of the house roof peak. And the second condition is that the garage shall have a gable roof that generally matches the roof pitch of the house. I'll just go back here to the picture of the house to to reiterate what staff is thinking in terms of the design and the character of the roof for the garage. So that is staff's recommendation. We did not receive any comments for this particular item. If you have any questions about staff recommendation, I'll be happy to take them.
Can you tell me about the site and the grade to the south of the house? Is it level or on the same level, or does it fall off to the south?
The grade difference between the road and the, I can find another view of it, though.
But to the back, it's pretty flat. You're asking, was it goes from the back of the house back? That remains pretty flat in that area, if I'm remembering correctly.
I have a picture of it. Director's side between the front of the house.
Yes.
There's another house and a garage.
I see there, there's a fence there on the, it looks like the southwest corner of the house.
So if that's level, I think that answers my question. I thought that perhaps if the grade fell, then the sloped roof as proposed wouldn't be as intrusive as otherwise.
So this is, this is the back of the house, the driveway, and then there's a driveway here and a garage for the neighbor. The neighbor's house is right here.
Could you email that picture?
Sure.
Thank you. We'll need it for the record.
For clarification, though, that is also a private drive. That's not a road, isn't it? I mean, that's not a main road there. You're like, you're going down a private drive to get to where she took the picture, right? Not saying you're trespass, but the picture's awesome. Appreciate the picture. I just want to clarify. Oh, yeah, but it's not a big, that's not a road. Most people aren't going back there.
Are you talking about this?
Correct.
Yeah, it's a, it's a drive associated with another use, is that a church on 35th?
Yeah, there's a church on that.
Go to the aerial, so it's like sheet, or slide two, maybe? So it's kind of a shared driveway access for the applicant, another neighbor, and well, it's a church.
All right, any other questions? All right. The applicant can come forward. 10 minutes. Please state your name and address and sign in.
Am I allowed to speak on behalf of the homeowner?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Marlon Veltkamp, Veltkamp Construction. I'm the contractor on the project. We had previously pulled this permit for the garage last summer. I think it was July, if my memory serves. The reason why we did this is they did a big upgrade in the back with a fireplace and built-in a grill and that type of thing, and they were doing all this concrete work. So at that point, they were putting in the foot- So at that point, they were putting in the footings and the foundation and that type of thing. Between that time and now, she's kind of come up with a different idea on kind of the look and wanting more storage in the garage and that type of thing. So we kind of came up with some different ideas. We did try to pull in the windows, window design from the house, as well as the siding. Granted, most of the house is stucco, but the siding that is on the house is lap siding. We're matching that same look, trying to do that. As far as the numbers, there are a few things that are a little bit different. The peak of the house is around 17 and 1/2 feet. My intentions were to stay below that when I built the structure itself. So as far as the placement and that type of thing and answer, I'm not sure who was asking about the grade. The grade is pretty close to flat. That private drive that shares, that the three neighbors share, plus the church, was just redone and regraded and everything, so all the watershed is running properly and that type of thing as well. That was all done at the same time by the same contractor that Sean and Julie had hired.
All right, any questions?
No, none of you guys have addresses.
Oh, yeah, can you state your address?
4600 Boulevard Place. Good morning.
Thank you. And you can sign in there.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question? How did, how did this project end up in front of the Plan and Zoning Commission? What was the process to get here?
Well, he submitted building permit request, planning staff reviews all those, and identified that the proposed garage was taller and had a roof form that didn't comply, and so that's why his avenue for relief is here.
Thanks.
When we originally presented it, I'd put a gable roof on the thing, but by the time I did the drawings and that type of thing, the walls get so short on the second level with the matching pitch roof. So this was an attempt to try and pull in some window and siding design from the house into the garage, get the ceiling of the second floor for storage more accessible and that type of thing. That's kind of the basis of the whole thing, so.
Is there a cost differential for going to the gabled roof versus the flat roof?
There really isn't a large difference. I mean, obviously, miniscule, if you will, for the most part, just because of the span and that type of thing, the beams and stuff we have to put in there. There's really not a ton difference. The one thing I will mention, while she was talking earlier, I was thinking of this. As far as the location of this garage, where it sets up against the house, behind the house, next to nobody sees the difference in style whatsoever. You'd have to kind of come up that private driveway back to the church, really, to see the house itself. If you look on the original permit that we pulled, it's only four feet from the house and five feet from the property line. Before it was pushed back and they had no backyard, we pushed it forward to get them their backyard area. That's really the only change we did with the garage.
So the desire for the flat roof is purely for ensuring there's more usable square footage in the second, in the second level? Is that right?
Yep. And I tried to do as much as I could to pull the design in, and also not make it look like a square box back there and that type of thing, so.
And did you say that you're, you're going with a 17-point something?
At one point, I had measured to the peak of the roof, right there, literally to the concrete that we have finished now, and it was like 17.4 or something. My intentions were to be, as I'm building it, I'm the one that's going to be doing it myself, is to measure that, make sure I stay below it, you know? And if you guys have a request that I stay a specific amount, I can. Obviously, much more than a foot, we start getting, the garage starts getting down, you know, too far.
Do you think you're, I don't know if you're the owner or the contractor, would your, would your client, if you're the contractor, would your client go with that height?
Would they what? I'm sorry?
Would, would your client or the owner of the property go with a 17.4 height?
Sean and Julie, if you want to speak to that. I mean, that's kind of what we're proposing. As far as the 21-foot that was written in there, I'm not sure where that came from. It may possibly have been me. I can't honestly say. But it is more so around the 17-foot mark, and my intentions are to stay below that roof line.
Yes, our goal is to be able to have functional storage space. The age of the home, there's only a half basement in the, in the area, and it currently has, for support, seven more beams through the middle of the basement to hold the flooring. About three owners ago, they came in and placed large marble slabs through the upstairs basement, through the kitchen, through a main floor, which put an extra weight, so those extra supports had to be created for that floor. We have limited storage space with a half basement that also stores the, all of, all of the equipment, as far as water heater, furnace, and such. And so our goal is, by having that flat roof, we'll have space that you can get into and walk in and place items larger than a small tub. Including also, because of the size of this garage and its, it's, the narrowness of it and the lack of being able to expand, we even rotate our, we'd be rotating our lawn mower and snowblower up and down, because when you, once you park two cars inside the garage, there isn't space to set anything around the edges because of the narrowness of it, because we're landlocked in.
Could you state your name and address for the record and sign in, too?
Yes. Sean Bierman, 3600 Kingman Boulevard.
Before the contractor sits down, Sreyaosh, could you switch the slide to the building elevation? So it's probably, it's number eight. I just wanted to ask a question about that height, just to clarify. I think, I'm assuming that we came to a number based off of the scale, zoom out so we can see the whole thing, but there's a, there's a scale on there. So I just want, so at the high point of this, on the, I guess it'd be the, as you look at it, the right, so you were saying that that area right there would be 17.4 feet, or four inches?
That's my intention, yes. Obviously, building it myself, I'll accommodate that. With that 17-foot, I calculate that on the short side of the building, the walls will be approximately six foot tall. On the high side, they'll be of seven foot, and I'm speaking of the second floor, so.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm guessing that we just did our best to estimate based off the scale.
Yeah, that's fine. I didn't know if it mattered, so I thought I'd just bring it up.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this item? Anyone opposed? And anyone neutral? All right, seeing none, I don't think you need a rebuttal if there's no one speaking. Any other questions for staff?
Could you put up the, the like, site plan that shows the location of the garage relative to the house? I'm just curious kind of where it sits in the east-west direction.
Number seven.
Well, I have my own here.
So is the east, oh, okay. I'm confused. The edge of the house essentially, the edge of the garage aligns with the edge of the, edge of the house. Is that correct?
Yeah. Is that light gray line that the east wall?
Garage sits back about two feet ballpark. I'm shooting that off the memory. It's not right straight in line, so it sits back a little bit behind there. Let me see if I can-
Yeah, switch back. I think he's going to put it in.
I don't have a great picture of it, but it does sit back. I've got one that I'm kind of, it's from an angle, but I'm, it's probably about somewhere between 16 and 30 inches at the most, probably closer to the 2.0 mark.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
Right, where the truck is sitting is back by the lot.
Generically, if you look at this, that pail is sitting pretty close to the foundation that's poured already. I don't know if you can see that line right there. That's the break in the concrete from the pudding that's poured there already to be built on, versus in comparison to the garage that's there. So now, looking at that, that looks, obviously angles are deceiving, but abandon that two-foot to 30-inch mark, I would say.
I think it's important to know that there's a yard here, right?
Yes.
That, as you can see from the street, right, and the edge of that-
That's that private street, that, that cut right there.
The garage isn't going to go until back here, you're saying, right?
Yeah, it's going to be coming to the house.
Yeah, we'll just need you to email those in for the record. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm going to close the public hearing. Thoughts?
I have a bias to allowing the flat roof. I guess, personally, I guess, from my perspective, this isn't an area that's really seen from the road. I remember this, we actually, we looked at this house back in 2012 or 13, as something, but it's a smallish house. It seems like a very good use of space. It seems like we should be providing more opportunity to use these things better, and this neighborhood is a little more eclectic in design than I think presented. There's a lot of other flat roofs. There's a lot of other types of things that vary a lot. Heck, we even got a house a few blocks away that's like merged of two houses with a third in the middle. So I guess I, I don't see this as being out of keeping with the eclectiveness of this, west end of this neighborhood, to a point where I don't know if it's, again, it's a bias on my side. I have a lean towards saying I would, I would allow the flat roof here, personally.
Madam Chair, I tend to agree with what Chris has said. It's, although you might call it a flat roof, it's actually a sloping roof. And that, that I think is an important point. Oh, I thought my, yeah, talk into the mic. This is something that I complain about other people about. Thank you. I tend to agree with Chris on this. It is a sloping roof, and typically, I'm persnickety when it comes to an historic house and designing something that's compatible with it, right? And so you'd think that a gable end or, you know, a roof that has a pitch to it would be more appropriate. But in this case, there's something funky and interesting about the sloping roof that appealed to my aesthetic sense. And you can, you know, you can contradict me, and I'll be happy to be contradicted. But be, all that notwithstanding, I will move approval of the Staff B, deny, I'll deny, I'll move to deny-
But it's actually, you would just be moving approval of parts A and B?
Thank you. With the proviso that the peak of the pitch, that is the peak on the highest portion of the roof, be 17 feet or lower, which the, the developer, the contractor, and I believe the owner have already agreed with.
It was 17.4.
Four inches, right? 17.4 inches?
Yeah.
Yes.
So your motion is 17.4?
17.4.
To make sure I'm clarifying, so we're moving A, B, and B1, and not B2, or the motion is to move A and B in their entirety, with the modification of 17.4 versus 21? Because B2 is the one that says it must be a gabled roof, and I was hoping you're saying you're going to go on the wild side and go flat roof here, or sloping.
Yeah, I mean, you're not, you're, forget about what's in the staff recommendation. You're really just, Will has moved approval of parts A and B, subject to the garage having a maximum height of 17 feet 4 inches.
And that the roof be sloping, rather than a-
You're, that's, you're approving what they want to do.
Yes.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Yeah?
Thank you. Any opposed? All right, we do have a committee and director report. Jason is going to discuss the in-person quorum requirements.
Thank you. I was asked a question to, about how the on-the-phone versus in-person rules kind of work for purposes of quorum, and I thought it'd be good to just update the commission or clarify for everybody that for us to have quorum, we have to have that in person. So we have to have a quorum of people in person. Once we get past quorum, we can have commissioners call in and participate in the meeting if they have, you know, there's an obstacle to them being here in person. So just, if you have questions about that, let me know, but I just, you know, for those of you that, you know, in the future, or if you happen to know that we're relying on you for quorum, that means we are relying on you to be here in person for quorum, but always ask if you have questions. Thank you.
And that's all. Thanks, everyone. Meeting adjourned.
You are currently the only person in this conference. Please wait.